Okay, I think we're close. Call the council meeting to order, April 28th, 2022. We'll begin with a... Yes, go ahead. Wish somebody had done that for me when I was taking minutes yesterday for ARP. No, that's okay. Meeting's called to order. We'd like to start with pledge and a prayer. Okay, in an unusual situation for the council, we have three minutes that Debbie has provided us, March 28th, March 31st, and April the 5th. Council, hopefully you've received and had a chance to review those. We probably should take a motion for each one separately, starting with March 28th, to accept or reject.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been approved. Motion by Susan Hoon, seconded by Chad Malakot, to accept the March 28th, 2022 minutes. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Five-zero. Had to do a count, it's been changing. Have a motion for the March 31st minutes approval?
So moved.
Motion made by Chad Malakot?
Peg seconded.
Seconded by Peg Steffendell. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved, five-zero. A motion to consider the April 5th, 2022 council meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Susan Hoon?
Second.
Seconded by Betsy Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, six-zero. EDC update, Mr. Corey Murphy, you're up.
Good afternoon. At your station is a packet called Entrepreneurship Lead Economic Development, and it's a handout. As I've mentioned before, we're pursuing... If the organization has a word of the year, entrepreneurship is it. And so this is a... An overview, and then attached behind that is a draft survey that will be made available to the community, to entrepreneurs themselves. It will be electronic, probably either using Google Forms or Survey Monkey, and just wanted to make you aware of that effort. There has been a lot of good grant investment in the county, many of which the Economic Development Corporation had nothing to do with it, but I just want to acknowledge, you know, the million dollars coming to Henry County government for roads, congratulations, the highway department and any of the stakeholders that had something to do with that. Next-level connections, there was a grant award, I believe that went to New Lisbon Broadband for an area in the... I'm directionally challenged, so in the southeastern part of the county, whichever way that is. Thanks. Appreciate it. I wouldn't know whether you were pointing in the right direction or not. I know, I know. And the third is the trail. So the next level trails, so the Wilbur Wright extension. And then I don't want to steal any thunder from the Health Department Administrator, Angela, but Safe at Home is pursuing a grant. I don't mind. So Safe at Home is a not-for-profit that helps people in the county that have experienced abuse, they're a finalist for a State Farm competition for $25,000. You can vote up to 10 times a day, online, and after I'm done, I'll pass this out. It's also online. There was a newspaper article this week, I think yesterday, so we wish Safe at Home many votes to win the money which would do good work here in our community. Second item, I hope you've been invited to our annual meeting, that's on May 11th. You can RSVP at the office. Third item, we've communicated in collaboration with the commissioners, the auditor's office, and the county attorney, we've collaborated to set two dates for the food and beverage, kind of the next steps on how to move forward and drawing down the funds. You know, I wanted to... Joel and I wanted to have a meeting on May 3rd, and we were informed that it's like Election Day, right? And so, cuts are closed on Election Day. Now, on Election Day, you can only vote once. You can vote 10 times a day for Safe at Home, so there's your second plug, Angela. I'm doing all I can do. Vote, vote once in the Election Day, May 3rd. You can vote 10 times a day. That's awesome, all right. Anyway, so thank you to Commissioner Plummer for informing me that there won't be a meeting here on Tuesday, May 3rd, at noon. So, the two opportunities for the applicants are as follows. Monday, May 2nd, noon, or Thursday, May 5th, at 5:30 PM, here. You can come to both meetings, but you don't have to, because it's going to be duplicative. Be the same information shared twice. Generally speaking, it'll be public bidding, and then the claims process, and then the match verification process. You know, how do the awarded projects draw down their awards, working with the county commissioner's secretary and the auditor's office and that process? So that has been communicated via email. I think I copied Kennon, twice, because of the revised date, you know.
Did the other members get that, or just me to...
Just you.
I did get that about an hour ago, the revised, so note that. Noon on the 2nd, 5:30 PM on the 5th, that's Monday, Thursday.
Yes.
And that'll involve Joel and probably Debbie and Kayla, and people who need to know...
Yes.
Relating to the finances and the reporting, and then to go to the commissioners' claims and all that.
Yes.
And that process will be just... Okay, thank you.
And then finally, I will be calling upon chief elected officials in regards to ready. So we had a meeting a couple months ago. I needed some input on how to move forward. The region, in collaboration with the state, has additional information, and so I need some more input, need some more guidance. And so that consists of a representative from the county council, county commissioners, city council, mayor, hospital, community foundation, the town of Middletown and the town of Knightstown. Why those entities? Well, those entities contributed to our participation in ready. And so, this body last time was represented by Councilman Allen, because Councilman Gray was out of state. I will send the invitation to the president, the respective presidents of the bodies. Doesn't matter to me who attends, but we can't have quorum. It's not a public meeting. It's simply an opportunity for Jennifer Fox and I, who represent this county geographically, on the ready. Did you hear the "the"? On the ready. It's now, you know, the Google, the Walmart, the ready.
The Ohio State University.
Well, yeah, I don't know that, I don't... Okay, I'm an IU fan, sorry. How we move forward. So that's all I have. Happy to answer any questions, if there's maybe something I didn't cover.
No, as I recall, you sent about two days before we flew out of state, you sent... And I said, "I'm going to be out of state."
Yep.
And I sent a notice out to all council. Everyone had conflicts, or no one volunteered except Kyle. And Kyle had been on this council less than two and a half weeks, so he was kind of thrown to the wolves and was a sponge.
You did a nice job.
He was a sponge.
So my input, I'm sure, was greatly appreciated.
It was. I was proud that being a newbie stepped up and was able to attend for the council, and Bobby attended for the commissioners.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. One of the things I was going to comment, when I attend a Newcastle council meeting, the last few times I've attended, each councilman, it happens to be a councilman in this case, gives a positive, something positive from their area, or something positive that they knew about. And I think what you just did is you gave a list of positives for the county, and I appreciate that. Something uplifting, something you'd always turn on the news and get, so thank you for the positives. Okay, chamber update. We have ask, Shonda Kane with a K, it's not proper on the itinerary, it's not like sugar cane, it's Kane with a K. Shonda, chamber commerce update. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you, and good afternoon. Just some updates on the chamber. We're currently working with the police department and the city to get the highway closed for Memorial Day, so memorial ceremony and parade on the 30th, the Monday. Ceremony will be at 9:00, parade begins at 10:00. Anyone interested in participating in the parade or volunteering, we'll happily take volunteers, just contact us. We will have also the Justice Center parking lot, we've been approved, thank you, to use that for food trucks this year, so we'll be serving breakfast, adding that, working on getting some other things added as well, because as we know, it is the bicentennial, so looking forward to a big celebration. Rats will be here for us, I have some other guest speakers coming, so Attorney General has expressed some interest in speaking as well, so looking forward to that. Recently hosted Senator Braun at REMC, also looking forward to hosting Governor Holcomb coming in July or August, so look forward to that for a chamber event. And also on May 19th is our next chamber lunch, and as you Ball State fans in here know, they just signed on a new head coach for men's basketball, and we'll see you there, Betsy, so he'll be our guest speaker, and we'll be building up the hoopla and the knockout contest and those sort of things at the lunch as well. And we continue with our workshop Wednesdays, supporting our small businesses and our entrepreneurs. Since the gala, I think the gala created a little bit of a stir, we're very pleased with their turnout there, we've had upward of 15 new members, so we're excited. All be on small businesses and entrepreneurs, so lots going on there. Have a QuickBooks workshop, two-day workshop coming up. Got a lot of going on, so just be sure and visit our website. The next big thing is our parade, so love to see a lot of people there.
I attended, you probably mentioned it, and I was looking over my notes, I didn't get further behind, but a grant writing workshop that you had. Very informative, and I've since... I went right over there and checked out the grant writing book that he highly recommended, the presenter was, you know, from Ball State, and teaches a class at Ball State on grant writing, and they had that book, and I checked it out.
Great.
Don't give me a quiz on it, I haven't read it yet, it's about 500 pages, but it's the ultimate bible for grant writing. So when we get our grant writer, in a month or two, or whenever, I'm going to donate that book, because I actually bought one on Amazon too, so I knew I wouldn't get it read before it was due at the library. That was a good workshop.
Good.
And I think 15 people at least attended.
Yeah, that was a nice size. Next week is Kristy Regal with Whole Heart Communications, so she's always got great information, so that's free to members, it's only $10 to non-members, or you can just join the chamber and then you can go for free.
Inquiry, people want to know how much it is to join the chamber. Does it depend on how large of an entity you are, or is it the same for everyone?
No, it is tiered, so an individual, you can join just under your name, it's only $50, the not-for-profit is $100, and then the tiers start at $200.
Depending on the size of the business.
Yeah, it goes from how many employees you have.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you.
Thank you.
More positive news.
Yeah, absolutely.
See if we can keep that string going.
I just want to chime in, the gala last month was just... Or, I don't even know when it was, a couple weeks ago. It was a fabulous event. It was positive, it was uplifting, we honored members of the community who give back. Truly, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
It was only good vibes, it was only positive. I know it was the first one, it was spectacular, and I think everybody in their room thought so, so thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, and thank you for everyone's support, that takes everybody, so thank you.
And we hope that you can give an update every month.
Okay, appreciate it, we'll be here.
Thank you. Shonda with a K. Okay, additional appropriations, we have the ARP, or ARPA, if you want to add ACT at the end of the acronym. You should have in front of you council members. I think the important part, correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, is probably the exhibit A, that will need to be signed ultimately. Most of it, it looks like you've had at the March meeting, number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, you should have had at the March meeting. Last two are the ones that Angela was asking about in an email today, that I finally read about 2:30. That was number 13 and 14, so I'll read these two that are new to ARPA, that have been approved by the committee and the commissioners. Number 13, up to $9,000 for the acquisition of a trailer and other necessary equipment for the creation of a mobile point of dispersion for use by the Henry County Health Department. Number 14, up to $11,000 for the acquisition of two hard-covered laptop computers and software and equipment necessary for the creation of identification cards by the Henry County EMS, Emergency Management Service. The computers I have now are just not capable of running. Oh, it needs to be corrected. Okay, thank you. When I say EMS, I was thinking ambulances. Okay. EMA. I just read...
Kennon?
Yes.
What was the dollar figure for the laptops? I missed it.
$11,000. This is going to be probably top of the line. Waterproof, because they go out in the field, shockproof. The software to... Identification cards, I think.
It also includes software for his... He does badges and different things that he does, so it's not just the laptops, it's software and I believe a printer as well.
And that could be the go-to location for county government as well. As far as badges, security badges, I know we require badges like at the schools for teachers and staff members, part of their school safety program and protocols. Okay, we have basically everything that has already been approved, number 13 and 14, the $9,000 for the equipment for the mobile, for the health department, $11,000 for laptop for EMA. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Who was it? Chad? And who seconded?
That's him.
Approved, motion to approve by Chad Malakot, and seconded by Betsy Mills. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We, I think we have seven-zero. Did you vote, Harold? I just saw you come in. I'm slow. Seven-zero. I think I'd like at this time to give a brief update for the ARP committee, and since Bobby's here, she serves as chair of that committee. I sent to the council minutes, and because I didn't have... I didn't always catch, because I was listening and talking and writing, I didn't always catch who made a motion or didn't make a second, that kind of thing. But were there any questions by the council on yesterday's ARP committee meeting? One motion I did make, that's in the minutes that I sent to you as an FYI, was of the million dollars that's listed under legal fees, I asked them when Debbie gets back, she give a balance of that, and whatever the balance is, that 2/3 of that would go to the highway department for roads, and of the remaining 1/3 of the balance would be split evenly between Memorial Park, because of the needs, they had representatives here yesterday, they have extreme needs in Memorial Park, and ARP funds are legitimate uses for that, so half of the 1/3 would go to help them, perhaps with an engineering firm, to give an assessment of costs and needs, and what it would take to do things like dredging the ponds, and the other half of the 1/3 of the balance would go towards county volunteer fire departments. So if the balance is, let's say, 750, 2/3 or 500,000 would go to roads, and the remaining 250 would be split roughly, 125, 125,000 each, 125,000 additional to the park department, Memorial Park, pardon me, and the other 125 would go to the volunteer fire departments, all of which have strong needs. Anything else? Any questions about those minutes I shared yesterday?
I just want to say, I think it's wonderful that we would invest in our park. I mean, it's one of our greatest assets, it's one of our crown jewels, and I know that they've... You know, money's hard to come by sometimes, but this, I think, with this money, you know, coming from the federal government to invest in our park, and the return on investment is there, times many, many factors, so I just think that's wonderful.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and we should be getting our second tranche, or half, from the federal government in May, they said a year from the first, which was mid-May last year, so hopefully within the next three or four weeks, we'll have another 4.65 million. And again, it's one in a lifetime opportunity, more than likely, to investment in the county. Ares Grant. Oh, one more thing before I go on to Ares Grant. I do not know if I forwarded to you, this is from Wagner Irwin and Shealy, a job description on the grant writer, the grant administrator for, that was approved out of ARP funds. So, is Ann back, or will soon be back? Okay, so I would assume that would go through her and the commissioners, or somehow it'd get advertised.
So normally, Kennon, that would go to job classification, but we... That's why I asked for that to be put on the agenda, just to be handled directly by the council this evening, because we didn't have time to advertise a job classification this week, so we were hoping to add that directly to the council agenda this week.
Okay, do you want to do that?
So, yeah, we approved the salary ordinance, the position has already been approved, so we just need to... Normally, it will go through the job classification, but again, because of the timing and not wanting to delay this...
Right.
You know, I talked with everyone, and we're definitely willing just to take it, and if you were open to it, I'd like to add that directly to the agenda. As a matter of fact, I'll make a motion that we approve the job description and salary ordinance as presented.
Okay, did everyone get a copy of that? Everybody seen the job description? Okay, very good.
Second.
It's been moved by Chad Malakot and seconded by Betsy Mills, and I'm going to hand my copy of the job description to Kyle Allen. I've lost track of what I forwarded, because I forwarded so much in the past couple weeks, and the... Actually, the last couple of hours, thing's been coming feverishly. So if you don't have it, I will send it, but it is very thorough. It's the kind of work that Wagner Irwin Shealy, we hire them to do. So it's been moved and seconded that we approve this position, as per delineating the job description.
Can I make a couple comments on that?
What's that?
For you, I mean, so just so everybody understands, that this is a $50,000 salary, but for the first year, funded for the first year, with the expectation that they will write their salary into the grants, so it's kind of like the highway engineer, we will have to fund it, and then that will come back, because, you know, you just don't know what grants are going to come in.
And I'll simply add a footnote, that this gives the new person great high incentive to be successful, because their future job depends on it. It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion or delineation of the motion?
Kennon, did you say this is a part-time position?
No, it's a full-time for year one.
It's a full-time position.
We're paying for year one, and they have to write the administrative cost into future grants to be continuing in year two and forward. And it's... Year one's paid from the ARP monies, not from county general or anything, it's from the ARP monies that we talked about. I apologize, I apparently did not forward that particular one. Just let me know when you're ready. That's okay. I think the main thing the council needs to realize, it's no additional money out of the county general fund, that it is being paid by part of the 4.65 million we got from the federal government for the American Rescue Plan Act. And we've talked several years about a grant writer for the county. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we're going to end discussion, and all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven-zero. Ares Grant. I'm going to have to ask the council what information they've received, but basically, I have a breakdown, but basically, it's broken down on the itinerary, there's a segment... There's a segment under this, uh, grant. This is part of the tobacco settlement from, uh, twelve, fifteen years ago. So many billion dollars to the states and then locals could apply, which we have. And so this is part of the, uh, drug succession tobacco settlement with big tobacco from a couple of decades ago, actually. Nineteen thousand five hundred for education and prevention, twenty-one thousand one hundred and seventy for treatment and intervention, twenty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-eight under the category of justice and law enforcement, and ninety-three ninety for administration of the fiscal agent to administer Ares. This is one of those legal requirements that once a year the county council has to approve. But it's a, it's a substance abuse mainly for law enforcement and for our schools under education and prevention, treatment and intervention in law enforcement. Any questions? Yes, bless you. And I would take a, a motion if not. Harold Griffin, uh, prove, uh, motion that we continue with the program and in doing so would be approving their, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, seconded by Chad Mallicoat. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Compliance with statement of benefits, real estate improvements. This is a legal document, uh, that comes to us from Gibbs Firm of LPA out of Cincinnati, Ohio. Address to Debbie enclosed please find form CF dash one, real estate compliance and state of benefits, real estate improvements for the above referenced taxpayer for tax year twenty twenty-two. This form was also filed with the assessor's office along with personal property compliance with the state of benefits and business tangible personal property return and all applicable supporting forms. Please contact our office at a phone number if you have any questions or concerns. According to attorney Harvey, uh, this document has to be approved by the council, is that correct?
That's correct.
You're essentially checking compliance with what they said they would do in their abatement request.
Okay, so this goes along with legal requirements of the abatement for TS Tech.
Correct.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this legal document that's required by law? So moved. Been moved by Chad Mallicoat.
Second.
And I didn't hear who did the second.
Susan.
Susan. I wish I were behind you. I could see who's opened their mouth. I can't tell by voice. It's been moved and seconded, uh, seconded by Susan Hoon. Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
I would only further say that, you know, if you look at the compliance documents, again, TS Tech blew it out of the water compared to what they promised and what they provided, nearly double. So, I mean, they are phenomenal employer in the community and have more than met their obligation.
Yes, I would, I put them in Boar's Head well above what was anticipated and promised. So thank you, Chad. It's been moved and seconded. If not, any further discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Approve six zero. Check that off. Advertising for BZA council appointment. Now, one of the things we've learned over the last two months is we were trying to investigate who makes the, the vacancy on the BZA. And this particular vacancy is by the county council. And we haven't had to appoint one since most of us have been on this council. So this was new to us. I did forward to you, uh, from code, uh, from the state of Indiana, the description of members on the BZA, which is the Henry County Board of Zoning Appeals. I think I run this by you because in our January meeting, we discussed that we wish to advertise these positions for which we appoint. And so I would just like, uh, your blessing to work through Ann or whoever the applicable person or party would be to advertise this, so we can hopefully address this at our May meeting.
I certainly think it's a great idea. I would only add that if you're going to advertise, at the same time you advertise the two openings we have on the job classification committee for citizen appointees again, we are still desperate for people to join that committee. We've had no citizen appointees for several months now. So, um, I, you know, if you're gonna advertise, it's, it's piggyback and not spend any more money, but still try to see if we can advertise for some citizen appointees.
I don't know, we need a motion, but do you make that a motion?
I will make that a motion, that we advertise for the BZA council appointment as well as the two citizen appointee appointments that we have on the job classification salary committee.
Motion made by Chad Mallicoat, and I'm not going to repeat it. I hope you got it down. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Susan Hoon, that we, I am going to try to, uh, rephrase that, that we advertise for the open BZA appointment as well as the opening on the community appointments for the job classification committee. And, um, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Six zero. Public defender's office. Uh, this was from Ann Bankston from yesterday, Tuesday, pardon me. From Kathy, and Kathy's here. Well, I'll just turn it over to you. Okay, does your office go through, uh, HR to advertise or do you have other means or additional means to advertise? Okay. Well, I appreciate the heads up and hopefully we'll have Jeff here that we can thank him.
Kenan, so, um, I, my only question is, and I, and Debbie isn't here, but we received an email late this afternoon that says, "We need to go back and look for an ordinance because several years ago we changed all the PD deputies to contractual because the expense of keeping them on the county payroll was outrageous." So, um, I, I guess my question, and unfortunately Debbie isn't here. Bobby, I don't know if you've had a chance to speak to her and have more information, but I did not. I know she's at conference today. So my concern is, I, are, are we needing a motion to move forward with this? My concern is I think we need to find out what the backstory is from Debbie before we just blanketly say yes, we need to move forward. Cause I wanna make sure that one, we're doing this properly, because if there is an ordinance, I don't know of a particular ordinance. Joel, I'm not sure if you're aware of the ordinance Debbie is speaking to.
I'm not aware of it.
Cause it could've been in Scott's time or could've been prior to your time.
Sounds like it was prior to most of our times, maybe Harold.
I don't, I don't know, Harold, if you are aware of any, um, but I mean, I, I think we almost have to take a breath and make sure that we're moving forward properly with, with our auditor giving us this heads up, um, and maybe readdress this at our next meeting.
Okay. Okay, Chad, we're, who is that from, the, the email that you referred to?
From Debbie Walker, auditor, Henry County.
Okay. When did you receive that?
At one forty-eight this afternoon. She sent it to all of the council and copied in Commissioner Plummer.
Okay, I have not read that yet. Okay, well, I would suggest that this was a matter of information and we do some research. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
I don't know if we need a, I, I think we just need to press pause and do some research on the ordinance. So Joel can, yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's something you might have at your office, but.
Thank you, Kathy. We will research. Okay, job classification, was there, you alluded to something in email this week, Chad, about the, I think the assistant highway superintendent. The floor is yours for whatever needs to be, if it's anything.
Well, um, I don't see Joe Copeland here, so I'm not sure if he was ready to present that. I know that he asked that it, he, he did not, he never got back to me and responded as to whether or not he was ready to present that, so.
And I met with him about three hours ago and he didn't mention anything, so. So I would say.
I'm not sure that it was, it was delayed last month and I think we may be in that same position this month. And the other thing I had was the grant writer that we've already addressed.
Okay.
And I can say Joe and I talked to Addy from Wagner and Shealy yesterday about whether the job was properly classified as an exempt employee. And after talking through it, uh, Addy was of the opinion it is properly classified, but she, they discussed some additional duties that the person is now doing and she was going to consider that as to whether she would recommend any additional salary for that position and maybe reclassify it with different duties, so.
And as the chair of the job classification committee, I spoke with Addy at length myself as well. And she at that time agreed that she felt very confident that it was classified properly and exempted versus non-exempt, it should, it was classified as well, so that, but that's why we're waiting on Joe to make sure he has all this information in, so.
Sounds like we're waiting for more information from Joe and possibly Addy. Okay. Press pause two. Highway department update, I do have a little bit, cause as I said, I meant, met with Joe earlier today. Something, uh, Steve Dellinger and I alluded to at our ARP meeting yesterday is, uh, talking with Joe or communicating with Joe within the past couple of weeks, he said asphalt has gone up twenty-two percent in cost since last year. He had a goal of, uh, resurfacing or attending to repairing all seven hundred and seventy miles over thirteen years of Henry County roads. And he gave me a chart and basically with the increased costs, which is astronomical, there's no way he can, he can now do that, uh, all county roads in thirteen years, uh, which is disheartening. But we did, as, um, Corey mentioned, we did get a one million dollars in community crossing grant. But with that increase in asphalt, uh, in previous years, I think the last two years, Milestone got that contract and they were able to do between eleven and twelve miles. Milestones, uh, was contracted out because they can do the wider roads that our current newer paving machine cannot, uh, lay down asphalt that wide, uh, properly. So the wider roads such as Raider Road a couple of years ago, uh, Dublin Pike this past year, et cetera, they have gotten that bid and that we're able to do between eleven and twelve miles. He is going to have to sharpen his pencil to be able to hopefully get nine miles of county roads out of our seven hundred and seventy miles with the one million dollars being contracted out because of labor and increased asphalt cost. So that's just, uh, an FYI. It's unfortunate. I mean, inflation rate may be going seven, eight, nine percent, but asphalt is two and a half times that. It's a petroleum byproduct and the cost is just, uh, skyrocketing. Also, I ask him because I think the number one complaint we get are potholes and bad road conditions when we go out into the community. Uh, I ask him today, um, what kind of equipment we have to, to address potholes, for example, uh, cause we have some major ones and this year he said it's been really bad. He said in the past they'd had four dump trucks for that purpose, uh, that's equipped. Two of them are sitting, they, they are beyond repair. So he's gotten quotes, but he's only had one dealership nibble quote so far. And, uh, those dump trucks, uh, they're gasoline, not diesel. And they're not four-wheel drive and they don't have all the bells and whistles. I think roughly sixty thousand approximately per, and he's gonna, he's budgeted in his budget for two. So, but the one bidder said it would be three months out because you drive by Ubler and you see that there's very few vehicles, new vehicles on that lot. Microchips, computers, whatever, mostly from Taiwan, there's a shortage. And they're not manufacturing like they used to. So there's a shortage of dump trucks and a three-month delay, if that's the way it goes. He's talked with Joel about what if they don't get multiple bids. So that's an FYI. He wants to address that, so they have four dump trucks as they used to have to address, uh, potholes. I asked him about staffing and he said he's about to lose one person. He has a part-time person that's, uh, a go-getter, that's retired from the city highway, street department. But there's gonna be some vacancies on the staff too. And I've reported to you before that at one time there were thirty-six employees out there and now there's twenty-two. So it's a staffing, it's a cost, it's an equipment, it's, uh, it's almost a losing battle. Uh, council members, I think I brought it to you within the past month, what Joel, Joel Copeland alluded to, road maintenance projections by different maintenance type. This does not include the one million dollars on the community crossings, which, um, I know it's gonna finish Dublin Pike, where it ended down through New Lisbon to where it's halfway decent on Wilbur Wright Road to I-70. And there's a few, a few others, but again, at most nine miles compared with maybe twelve miles in the past because one million dollars won't go as far. Any questions about the highway department? Everybody still wait? Insurance, I got it late last night. I have not, uh, forwarded that to you. It, it was not a terrible month, but it was a little bit higher than normal, but we're still within budget. Probably all that needs to be said. ARP. I think I covered ARP with the exception that in the, um, minutes that I shared with you on email, we also approved twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars for the coroner. That, that hadn't gone through yet? Okay, it's been recommended, uh, through Stacy Guffey's report yesterday, that, uh, a motion was made for twenty-five thousand seven hundred for equipment that he shared. And I don't think it's, uh, a secret that the intention is to move the coroner over to the old jail. Is that public? Okay, good. It is now.
It, it's not been a secret.
I didn't think it was a secret, cause I turned it at various meetings, but now it's definitely not a secret.
And just to clarify, this is for development of the, the morgue?
Correct. The, the, the equipment yesterday discussed is cooler equipment lifts, uh, yeah. Cause his numbers have been, uh, Henry County's numbers have been really high the last two years and he's running at record levels again.
Not only that, but just for a county our size to have, you know, an interstate running through our county, you know, we are really subject to a mass casualty incident, so. through our county, you know, we are really subject to a mass casualty incident, so having that is going to be crucial.
Agreed. Yes, that was not on the ARP that you had, that should be on next month, along with what other things that I discussed earlier. Before we get to discussion of the $1 million remaining in food and beverage, are there any other items that we need to discuss, because this may take a little bit?
Sure, I have something really quick. Last month, I brought up the broadband speed test through Indiana Farm Bureau. Our constituents did a great job with that responding, and it really, it made, it made a huge impact. I think they had Corey Neff, I think he responded, and this was weeks ago, but at least 50 people took it, so that's impact, that's data. I would just echo that. I don't have a link other than to say, you know, Google Farm Bureau, Indiana Speed Test, and it takes you right there, but just, you know, the more data we can get on file, the more we can, you know, apply that and get results for our counties, so thank you to everybody who participated, and just want to echo, if you haven't yet, please do participate.
Thank you.
Can I give a park update?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I have been speaking with the Park Board President and with Rita Fisher as a liaison, and I just wanted to invite Rita down to share with the council to make sure that the council is aware of the financial needs that the park has. I know they came and talked with the ARPA group, but I wanted us to hear it directly.
Thank you.
News Secretary is Casey Richards, and she knows a lot more about it than what I do, so she'll be answering the questions along with me. So, you want to go pass those out? We got some information about our pond, and I don't know, we've got the big shelter house, which is, if it's not 100 years old, it's close, and we got some major problems there, too, so I don't have any pictures of that one yet. So you want to tell them a little bit about?
The ponds?
Yes.
I believe our commissioners are working to get everything we need, quotes and stuff to get the ponds. It's no secret that it's been needed done for a few years. As you can see with the pictures, the shoreline erosion is only going to get worse the longer we wait. And the pond and park is beautiful, so whatever we can do to help make it last will definitely help.
I know we, I've talked with at least one other council member. Has the Park Board considered, once the ponds are restored, so to speak, opening up for boat rental again? Does that conversation ever happen?
I think they would love to have the boats back. There's many factors with that, you know, the depth and the cleanliness and things like that that have to take place, but.
And that means that we have to check into the liability of it, and then we'll have to have someone, hire someone to run them all the time. Now, I don't know if we could get an outside company that would come in and do it, or if we do it ourselves.
Refresh my memory, were those like?
Yeah, yes.
I vaguely remember when we moved here, seeing those out there. And I know state parks that have those, they just, they charge a rental to, I don't know, $10 per hour or something to rent those.
Right. I think Summit Lake has those, and they rent canoes, too, but they're a little bit bigger than we are.
Yeah, a little bit.
Rita, remind me, when I was on the Park Board, we had a heck of a time with that blue-green algae. I'm assuming what's, what some of these pictures are trying to show, and there's still a lot of problems because of that, is that coming back again this year, I know we had, it got so bad. One time, we literally had to flip the ponds. We had fire department there, I was up there all night with the previous superintendent running a pump that Commissioner Yanos pulled all the way down from his house to try to turn the ponds to keep them from killing off all the fish and everything, because it got so bad. Are you guys seeing those kind of things coming back again?
Well, they, they stayed pretty clean last year, and they've been putting a, what is it, straw around the bottom to keep it out of the bottom, the lower pond.
Yeah, because it kind of works as a filter.
Yes.
The scales of straw work as a filter to help catch that, so, yeah.
And we also put chemicals in it that does not hurt the fish and the grasses and stuff. It's just the algae that grows. So it's been doing pretty good now. The upper pond on the south side, we have trouble with that because we get runoff in it from all the, let's see, fertilizer and stuff from the fields and stuff, so we have trouble there. And we try to keep it aerated really good.
Were you, you guys were aware that the council did fund the shelter house at $250,000? Is that enough to do the repairs that are needed? Is that part of what we're going to be finding out with the ARPA evaluation?
I would say that it will get us started, but it won't do the whole repair. We've got foundation, the, it's starting to crack, and we don't know if there's like steel inside of it, you know, like I-beams or something like that. We'll have to drill into it and see. But if it's not, if it's all concrete, it's cracked all the way through on just about all of the supports. And we don't have any gutters around it at all, and it's causing the overhang to leak. And that's just on the outside, and there's some concrete that's been cracking and stuff, but, and we need to try to update the bathrooms a little bit, and that's just on the outside.
And I'm sure that doesn't even touch the HVAC at all.
Oh, no.
Because I know when I was on the Park Board, that was $300,000 in itself, and that's been four years ago.
No heat, no air conditioning, that didn't have anything to do with the inside of the shelter house. No, we don't have any EDA bathrooms, and we was looking at that, so, but we'll have to probably shore up the, around the upper floor before we can put ADA bathroom in there.
And what, what's the discussion of the Park Board about the roads through the park? Is that something that, Kenan, do you know if the Highway Department has that on the list, or is that considered separate?
It's private roads. It cannot be done by the Highway Department.
Well, it can be, but there is a cost. I know a commissioner has talked to him, has talked to Joe, and I've talked to him. It's not impossible. He's entered in, there's been well-to-do farmers that have paid going through the foundation to get roads done.
Right.
And it's been done. It's a little bit out of the ordinary. It's not illegal, but there's a cost, especially with the asphalt and the labor. I mean, it's going to take somebody off of county roads. But it has been addressed, but there's no solution to that. There's no answer to that yet, but it would be costly. They could patch it.
Yeah.
They would be glad to go over next door, you know, 300 yards and patch it.
Our guys have been, they patched, what, about two months ago?
Yeah, they patched the whole north side the best that they could, and that patch will last a little while. We haven't touched anything on the south, and that's, it's pretty rough over there.
Right. We've all gotten complaints about it, along with other roads. So it's going to be expensive. I know Steve Dellinger yesterday at our meeting mentioned that he'd contacted some firms for the dredging. We alluded to an engineering firm that could give us some direction and possible cost of what it really needs to be done from an engineering standpoint. I mean, infrastructure, the ponds and other things that you're alluding to, and that's all going to be costly. I'm sure, I don't know if any engineering firm's going to come in for less than $50,000 to do a thorough job, they just, it's just expensive.
Yes, and we have problems with all the water lines and stuff that's going into the park. They leak, especially in the, when we shut them off in the fall, and when we turn them back on in the spring, we've got so many leaks out there that, you know, it all really needs to be replaced because they've never updated anything.
And that's going to be a major cost.
Oh, yes.
Steve mentioned that yesterday, or you mentioned it yesterday, or Steve, Steve Peckinpah and Steve Dellinger mentioned it yesterday, the two Steves. The water in sewer is going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Oh, yeah. And we haven't got a quote on dredging the ponds yet, but I was told, the quote that they got about, I think, 10 or 15 years ago, was about $500,000 to do one pond. So I don't know, we're working on getting quotes on that now.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding, too, when I was on the board, because it gets, the EPA gets involved.
Yes.
And when that happens, it goes sideways. It's not like a farmer could come around and just haul it out to their field, which that many of them would love to do, but then you've got to, you've got to have sealed tankers, it gets the whole ball of wax. When I was on the board, that's what we discussed as well.
Yeah, and our big pond, the edges are wearing off, and we're going to have to rebuild that some and then put that riff ramp, whatever it is, the stone around it, to try to keep them from going back the way they are now.
When I was talking to Nathan, he made the comment that the yearly budget only includes just basic operating expenses, which is absolutely true. I mean, we've all sat through, well, Kyle hasn't got to sit through budget session yet, but there is just barely enough money to keep things cut back and mowed.
Yes.
So there's really no way in my mind that we could expect the Park Board to make these type of improvements with the regular budget that we provide you with. So if we want to support the park in these ways, it needs to come from an additional funding source besides the yearly budget, I think.
Yes, please.
I do think, again, I can't speak for the ARP committee, but it is a promotable expense. There was a motion made yesterday that the example, if we have 750 left and legal, that approximately 125 would go to that. But, and that's an approximation. That probably would pay for a very thorough engineering firm to do a complete analysis of the needs with monies attached to it and have some left over to begin some of that dredging or moving of dirt, but that would be it. But I can't speak for ARP, but it is a legitimate funding source, and we are about a month away from getting another 4.65 million. So it wouldn't have to necessarily come from food and beverage, but it could come from food and beverage.
Yeah.
Well, I, I really appreciate you guys being willing to come here, and this is something that I've been really thinking about quite a bit the last few weeks, and I, I would personally like to see the remaining food and beverage money go to Memorial Park to specifically address some of these needs. And I'll, I'll hold my motion until Kenan opens the floor for that type of discussion, but I really appreciate you guys taking the time to come here this evening.
We appreciate you guys thinking about us, too. Thank you.
Sure.
Given the meeting yesterday and today, I would say numerous people are thinking about you. I think you passed out something yesterday at the ARP meeting, I don't know if it's here or not. About your calendar of events, did you have a calendar of events you shared yesterday? I don't think that's part, but that was interesting, too. You have a whole list of things that are planned for the bicentennial year.
Yes, it's super fun stuff. I wish I would have brought them with me, I'm sorry. See, we're doing a spring cleanup day next Saturday, May 7, from 9 to 3. Thank you. We have about 20 volunteers committed to coming out and helping, we're just going to clean up, spruce up, paint, equipment, do some fun event things with them. And then June 18, we are throwing, it's called a Bark in the Park. It's a dog event. I've got 60-plus vendors that are committed to coming. We're going to have dog contests, and, you know, bring your dogs out and enjoy the walking trails and things like that. And then we are bringing, hosting a, thank you, a fishing derby, Father's Day, June 19. Both of those are kind of in collaboration with the bicentennial. We'll have contests and just a fun day to come out and fish, and then, of course, the Fourth of July fireworks.
Did we get a corporate sponsor for the fireworks? Is that coming in, and that's for sure a go?
We're working on it. We have one donor, donation that came in. That's all we physically have.
Is that citizens?
Correct.
Yeah. Just to build on what you're saying, a few weeks ago, the Republican Party of Henry County had our big fundraiser at Lincoln Day, and we hosted the Lieutenant Governor, other statewide officers, a lot of out-of-town guests, it was 200 people in the Smith Building. And I just want to say, you guys did such a good job in hosting us, and it was just really cool to show off our, you know, our park to the Lieutenant Governor and so many others, and they just, it was just such a positive event. And to be able to talk about our legacy there and our history and our monuments and our memorials and all of it, they just, they were very impressed.
Wonderful, thank you.
It was fun, and you did a great job personally, so thank you for all of your help.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the representatives from Memorial Park who are here? I do have information from Lisa Lee through Joel that they highly recommended that we firm up decisions relating to the food and beverage bonds so they can get that rolling. The feds are about positioned to make another interest rate increase in the prime, and we may have already lost approximately $50,000 due to increased interest. So we do need to make a decision. I've heard so many things from so many people that, you know, about the committee and following the committee's work. I'm open to recommendations, but I think before a motion, we need to have some ideas thrown out there of options. One has been the park, but I'd like to hear other, other ideas before, but I would really like to leave this meeting today, being able to get back with Lisa, our bond counselor with the firm, and also if there's additional parties receiving monies, or maybe that's not received money, that are going to receive money or more monies than what has already been discussed at prior meetings, that they would have the option to attend the meeting next Monday or Thursday and be part of that group. So just open it up to members with ideas, suggestions, recommendations. I think before we take any motion, I'd like to hear several, please.
So Kenan, I guess I would ask a question. I know we left our last meeting with the sports park and the expo, that they were going to come back with additional information. Has either of those come back to you with the additional information, answers that we were seeking?
I spoke to the mayor at the open house or the ribbon cutting at the jail, and he said he needed more than three days. And upon leaving, he said, I talked to two doctors who had verbally told me that they would give $500,000 each, and their response when I asked for that in writing was, what's the matter? Don't you trust us? So my simple answer to that is I've received zero additional information from the mayor.
What did Ronald Reagan say, trust but verify?
Initially, when he left the meeting, I simply asked for an electronic copy of the portfolio that he gave us, that he said we could not keep because it was investor portfolios. And I said, well, whatever's easiest for you. Surely you have an electronic copy of that. Just give me an email and I'll share it with the council. I have not received anything that was requested from the mayor.
And just to be candid with either of these projects, I don't, I have not personally received new data or information, and I feel unable to vote in favor of allocating money when there's no new information on the table.
I would like to see the money go to a group that's ready to use it, and I think that we've done that with the other funds, you know, we, the Hall of Fame is ready to go, the other smaller projects, the YMCA. You know, the Hall of Fame is ready to go, the other smaller projects, the YMCA, they're ready to go. And that is why I support giving the remaining funding to Memorial Park. They're ready to use it now.
My only footnote to that, and I'm not against that at all, because that probably would exceed a million dollars when the engineering firm comes back, is that we do know that ARP allows for that and we're about to get 4.65 million more within a month. And I know that we can tap that and that the committee seems to be favorable towards additional expenditures in the park. That's the only footnote I would attach to that, but I'm certainly not opposed to considerably more funding for Memorial Park. It's just the revenue sources, the question mark I have, Susan. I do have something here that I did obtain that, something, there was a controversy between whether water or sewer would go out to the Expo Center or basically Memorial Park, whoever would want to, it would tap Memorial Park as well. If they got water sewer out there, the engineering firm could tap into that and the cost would go way down from having to tap into Highway 3, probably. January 4th, 2021, from the mayor of Newcastle. "The Expo Board has been diligent in fundraising, has encouraged an eclectic group of donors to contribute to finishing this build. As mayor of the county seat in Newcastle, I am proud that we are committed our resources to bring water and infrastructure to this site. The build will be a game changer for us economically while bringing the community closer in a common goal." Being awarded this grant, this was a grant request, that there was a letter of support for the expo where he commits water and sewer to the expo site dated January 4th, 2021. That was new information that was in debate. I think that may go to litigation, from what I hear. Any other ideas from the council?
I would only echo what Susan has said. As someone who's been intimately involved in the park for quite some time now, sitting as a past park board president, I think it's hard to argue that that's not one of the biggest tourism drivers in this county. And to only can, hearing, I know the condition of the shelter house when I was there four years ago, so I can only imagine where it's gone from there. Because as Susan said, basically, the park board has enough money to buy duct tape and super glue as repair products. That's about it. So, and it's a phenomenal building. I doubt there's a single person in this room who's not gone to some event there, and it would be a shame to see it wasted and just have to be torn down because it continues to deteriorate. And I don't disagree with your comment earlier, Kenan. I think it could far exceed the monies. And I think it may require some from multiple pockets of money, including potentially seeking a corporate sponsor to name the shelter house or something, which is something we looked into back when I was on the park board. We could call it the Joe Wiley Shelter House. Joe, just write a check. I mean, you know, I think it's, I think it's going to require a significant investment. And I know those ponds, the ponds themselves could be a million-dollar expenditure. And as a kid, I fished in those ponds. I would venture to guess that, I'm sure Ed, Tarantino has fished in ponds many a times and had others, and most of the people in this room have done that. I've taken my daughter there when she was little. I mean, I just, I think it's something we have to seriously look at. And I tend to agree with my colleague here, Susan, that, you know, I feel that the park is, it's hard to not see the value in that park and the tourism and even the economic development, the potential you can get from that because of the lifestyle, of the things you bring in that a lot of folks, not so much in my generation, but in some of these younger folks' generation, they get more into that outdoors, those things, those parks, those trails. The park has done a good job over the past several years improving that lifestyle that so many folks in those younger generations are really after. So I really like Susan's idea. I think it's a good use of the funds.
I would just, I've got two things I'd like to tell you guys. On the fishing contest, we had one last year, and the little boy, three years old, won the fishing contest that had never fished, and he caught the most fish. And I just found out today that in the shelter house, the tile floor in the shelter house is the stick-on tile that you go to Walmart and buy. And we can't really clean it with any kind of cleaner, and we can't put a lot of water on it because they curl up, so.
And I will say, that building is only able to be opened from April 1st to November 1st. It is booked every single weekend, most Fridays this year, except for, I think we have like seven Sundays left. I mean, the community loves that building. It's, it'll hold 100 people. We provide the tables and chairs with the wraparound porch. I mean, it's beautiful, I mean, clearly, but like I said, it's rented on. And we, I could have rented it even longer had we had the heating and cooling. So even in August and Indiana weather, people are still wanting to come to that building with no central air and two ceiling fans. That's it.
I don't think anyone here argues about
Right.
the value of the park, the beauty of the park, the fact that it's a treasure for our community. Chris, you're here from the Y, I believe. Do you have anything to, usually people representing a project are here to share additional information like the park. Do you have any that you'd like to impart before maybe we take a motion here? You, this is from memory, you were awarded $300,000?
We were.
Was that your total request or was your original request more than that? Wasn't it 600-something?
650,000 was the original request.
And that was going to cover an expansion program, including the latchkey preschool?
So that was part of the.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm hearing you say that current latchkey programs that are used before and after school for working parents are, one of the major ones is going to be no longer available.
There is.
So the economic impact is people could be losing their job if they don't have childcare because they'd have to give up their job? That's the point you're making?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Chris, it sounds like a tremendous program. I hope you provide us updates here and there and just let us know it's growing. This is clearly such an important need in our community. And, you know, we've talked about that as a council. This is a quality of life issue. It's also economic development. And if we want employers to come in, they want their employees to have options like this. And I do apologize for blinking a lot. I think I have a migraine coming on and everything's very bright, so I'm sorry.
I'd like to go ahead and offer up my motion now to commit the remaining bond funds to Memorial Park projects, specifically to the shelter house, to the ponds and to the roads.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that the remaining, remainder, 1 million in food and beverage be going towards Memorial Park for enhancements that have been mentioned here this afternoon. Discussion.
I just want to add it, coming from a university environment, you know, people will pay a lot of money to have their name on things. I hope you guys explore those options, maybe take your time. That could be, that really could be a boon to the park. It's just a name. I mean, the options are limitless, anyway.
Yeah, I love Chad's idea. Money, you know, you could use these monies and double them by getting someone who wanted a legacy donation to go with it and let's make the park great again.
Amen.
Other discussion?
Okay.
How many revenues does the park generate through rentals and stuff each year? Just curiosity.
With COVID, it's kind of been a little bit there. I can tell you, year-to-date, just in the rental fund, we have generated about $15,000. Majority of that is the shelter house in the Smith Building. As we go on towards the year, we'll get more of the smaller rentals, the outdoor stuff. I think last year, do you know? I believe it was between 20 and 25,000 for the year. But as I said, we are, we're over halfway there for this year. So I think it's going to be a great year for the park.
And sorry, one more follow-up. There's no, it's just a strict shelter rentals, correct?
There's no one, I'm sorry?
It's just based on the rental fees, correct? There's no food or beverage preparation or anything along those lines?
No, they just rent the building.
And just from a discussion standpoint, I think we have to look at the source of the funds and the availability of funds that are out there. I agree that the park needs a, let's call it a facelift, a lot of things that are there. But as far as the different sources of funding with ARP funding on the table coming again and the discussions that have been around that, and then the true nature of the food and beverage funds and what they're allocated for, I'm not sure if food and beverage funds are most appropriate with other sources potentially being available.
I was going to make a comment that I reviewed Robert's Rules of Order, and the chair can make motions. They cannot make nominations for positions, appointments or offices, but they can make a motion. I was going to make a motion for 400,000 for the park, 300 the expo to get it finished, and 300 for the YMCA, given that, for a total of 1 million dollars. So I will be voting no, and that's my rationale for it. But you, there's a motion and there's a second, and any other discussion?
I would only tag on to what Kyle has said, and I don't disagree with necessarily what he said in the fact that there are certain additional revenues out there, but I think you can say that about every single project that applied, every single project. And also to try to use the rationale that they don't bring in any food and beverage money, the majority of the projects on our list brought in no food and beverage monies. That's not, I don't think that was ever sort of a requirement. Matter of fact, the only ones that really bring in that revenue are restaurants and where I would argue that the park does bring that in. It's the tens of thousands, if not six figures worth of visitors that come to Newcastle that stop along, three at the restaurants, that that's where the food and beverage impact would be, not on any food sales at the park itself, but that they certainly bring in tens of thousands of visitors, if not more. I'm not sure if there's been a count done in a long time, but as they've said, if you go out there on the weekend, the majority, on a summer weekend, the majority of the shelter houses are full. There are thousands of people in the park every single weekend in Henry County, and not all of them are from Henry County. I hope, I've held my family Thanksgiving there at the shelter house for several years, and I bring people in from all over the state and things. So I think it's, that's where the food and beverage impact would come into, is the thousands of visitors.
I'll simply say that the park can tap up to 4.65 million out of ARP that's available.
But anybody can, Kenan?
Well, they can, but that's up to the committee.
Absolutely.
It's already been, the president said the motion yesterday, the park will be getting approximately 125 if approved next month, which is a start. And we don't know what the costs are going to be because that has to go through that engineering firm to give estimates. We're just throwing money out there without having cost estimates for anything. So I will be voting no, and that's my rationale. Any other discussion?
I would just add that I support the park and I support the Y. The Y is, I admit, has been one of my pet things. I, this, the Y especially is going to save jobs, for one thing, because people need people to watch their children. I'm very passionate about that. If we could give the Y more money, I would be for it 100%. And I'm also for giving the park money. Those are the two things. I frankly don't care whether it brings in food and beverage money. That's not my goal here. It's to help the people in this county. The Y's going to help people. The park will also benefit our youth, our elderly, and everyone else who wants to get outside and enjoy that beautiful park. So that's all I got to say.
Okay, it's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we take a vote?
I also have to remind everybody about the way the statute drags. I also have to remind everybody about the way the statute's written and how in order to fund certain projects, there are certain classifications, and I think that we have to keep in mind that it required funding of the Expo prior to funding other projects. So of all the projects that are funded, have any of we funded roughly 30?
I've lost count of the actual numbers, 16?
Is it 16?
Something like that, but not, a little over half of the 28 that went before the committee.
I've lost track of all the...
I think it's that.
The big overall scorecard, but...
Any other discussion before we take a vote?
Wanted to point out that Lisa felt as certain as she felt about any of the statute that the 1.2 million that the council has already given to the Expo could qualify for funding.
Any other discussion? All in favor of $1 million going toward, of the remaining $1 million that we had not already approved from food and beverage to go towards the Memorial Park? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, let's do a roll call vote, because Chad Mallico?
Aye.
Susan Hoon?
Aye.
Betsy Mills?
Aye.
Kyle Allen?
Nay.
Betsy, Stephandale?
Aye.
Stephandale? Aye. Epstein? No. So it passes 4-1-1. 4-2-1. Okay, it's passed. Any other business they need to, well, Park's going to be at the meeting on Monday or, and or Thursday anyway. Any other business before the council? If not, I take a motion to adjourn if there's not any.